Ah, Margolletta. Is there any second to the motion?
Second, Mr. Chair.
You are seconded. Is there any objection hearing on the motions carried? We will not proceed to the interrogation. Congressman Akop will be the first interpreter. Please proceed Congressman Akop.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Most of the questions that my staff has prepared would concern Madam Gina F. Acosta, the special dispersing officer of the Office of the Vice President. I think she is not present today, is she? Comsec? Present pa si Madam Gina Acosta. Kasi siya ang kuwan eh, supposedly the special dispersing officer.
Your Honor.
She is not present. So, Mr. Chair, my questions would wait for the time that Madam Gina F. Acosta would be present in the next hearing. But I would just like to ask some questions from COA if they are present this morning.
Yes.
Thank you. Kailan po niyo in release yung COA audit report niyo regarding the OBP, regarding the use of the amount of 125 million underlying item confidential expenses? Kailan po niyo na-release yung COA report niyo?
Sino po ang sasagot? Attorney, sorry hindi ko bumakita 'yung pangalan. Attorney Camora from COA, please proceed.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. As to confidential intelligence and confidential funds, we do not issue any audit reports, just the audit actions, Mr. Chair.
Audit action?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Now, when was the confidential fund in the amount of 125 million transferred to the Office of the Vice President?
Sino po sasagot?
It was in December.
Attorney Camora?
December.
Mr. Chair, may I be clarified? The cash advance, Mr. Chair?
Yes, when was the fund, the 125 million amount, transferred to the Office of the Vice President?
Mr. Chair, the fund was received on December 20?
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Now, on 25 September 2023, according to reports, I, kayo po ay nagconfirm, maybe because of reports, nagaling po sa Office of the Vice President na the amount of 125 million confidential funds was spent in 11 days?
Mr. Chair, based on their liquidation reports, opo.
Kayo po, ang nagsabi nito, in your report?
Wala pong report, Mr. Chair, but audit action po.
Oh, it's an audit action. At kinokonfirm niyo na yung amount na 125 million was spent by the Office of the Vice President in 11 days? And that would be amounting to 11.3, thereabouts, million per day? Would that be correct? Tama po ba yun?
Mr. Chair, may I ask for the question to be repeated?
Ano po? Ulitin ko po?
Opo.
Kayo po, nagkokonfirm na in spend in your liquidation, in the liquidation report that was submitted to you, kayo po nagconfirm na in 11 days na ubos po yung 125 million confidential funds? Tama po?
Tama po, Mr. Chair.
And that is equivalent to spending 11.3 million a day? If it was spent, or if the amount was spent in 11 days? Tama po rin poa?
Tama po, Mr. Chair, based on their documents po.
And yung 11 days na yun, ay noong panahon na from 21 to 31 ng December 2022? Would that also be correct? O tama po ba yun?
Based on their accomplishment report, tama po, Mr. Chair.
And that is at the height of the holiday season, matatapos na po yung taon, di po ba?
Tama po, Mr. Chair.
At lahat po ng ahensya ng gobyerno, nagmamadali na ma-spend yung kanilang pera na nasa kanilang opisina. Di po ba? Kasi ang nangyayari po, di ba? Kung minsan, December 31, pinapaspasan po ng mga opisina ng gobyerno ang pag-liquidate po ng mga pondok na nasa kanila. Di po ba tama yun? Alam ko po yun dahil naging controller po ako ng Philippine National Police noong CPENPC, Senator Laxsonat, yun ang nangyayari eh. Kayo po ang sasagot, hindi na po siya.
That's correct po, Your Honor.
Um, paki-address niyo po niyo, Chair. Ta-antay niyo po na-recognize kayo. You are Ms. Sofia Gemora?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, please continue.
Kasi minamadali po nila ng mga ahensya dahil, if you notice, yung buwan ng December, normally it has four non-working holidays. So, apat na ang nabawas sa 11 days para gastusin mo. Tama rin po ba?
If I may add, Your Honor, to the what Attorney Camora had said earlier, with regards to the 11 days report of our audit team, we are the audit team of the Office of the Vice President. So, looking at the records or the recording in the financial statements, we found out that the cash advance was drawn on December 20, 2022. And on December 31, looking at the financial statements, there was expenditures recorded of the same amount, the 125 million. So, that was the reason why we, of course, it's correct to say that the 125 million was expended in 11 days. Your Honor.
Thank you, Madam. Now, because of this, the COA issued a notice of disallowance dated 8 August 2024, disallowing the amount of 73,287,000 from the 125 million confidential funds dispersed by the Office of the Vice President in 2022. Tama rin po ba?
Tama po, Mr. Chair.
Now, may I know, kung ano po yung mga dahilan po niyo, bakit nag-issue po kayo ng notice of disallowance dun po sa expenditure on confidential funds by the Office of the Vice President? Pwede po bang malaman yung rason po niyo?
Attorney Camora?
Mr. Chair, our reasons were indicated po at the ND. I would like, I'd like to make a rundown po. Yung may issue po sa payment of rewards nila, may issue sa payment of table, charging payment for tables, chairs, desktop computers and printers to the confidential fund, and also a non-submission of the revised accomplishment report, Mr. Chair.
Yun po yung official reason why you, COA issued a notice of disallowance. Tama rin po?
Tama po, Mr. Chair.
Now, may I ask, meron po siguro kayong breakdown ng expenditure of the confidential funds? Meron po ba kayo?
Mr. Chair, meron po sa accomplishment report.
Yes, and yung breakdown po ng expenditure ng 125 million, nasa inyo po sigurado yun? Tama rin po?
Tama po, Mr. Chair.
Now, may I know kung saan po nagastos ng Office of the Vice President, yung 125 million? Was it spent in accordance with the rules, regulations, and protocol on the expenditure or on the use of confidential funds? Nasunod po ba yun?
Yes, Mr. Chair. As indicated sa accomplishment report po, na-liquidate naman po nila based on confidential expenses as required by the Joint Circular po, Mr. Chair.
If I may, alam namang po niyo yung section 4.8 of Joint Circular Number 2015-01, on the use of confidential funds?
Opo, Mr. Chair.
Now, categorically, yung po bang items na kung saan ginamit yung confidential funds, ay naaayon po dito sa circular na ito?
Opo, Mr. Chair.
Eh kung, eh kung naaayon sa circular na ito, bakit po niyo, bakit kayo nag-issue, nag-issue ng notice of disallowance?
Mr. Chair, as to yung first finding, meron po kasing specific requirement ang Joint Circular na document na hindi po nila nasubmit or nag-submit sila, pero hindi po sufficient siya to answer the requirement of the Joint Circular, Mr. Chair.
Na-mentioned kanina ni Chairman, the Honorable Joel Chua, na in the accomplishment report of the President, if I remember it right, meron pong ginamit na, if I, yung surveillance in 132 places, tama po ba, Mr. Chair?
Yung areas po yun? Ah, 132 areas po. Yung 125 million, parang ginamit po yan in 132 areas.
Yes, and accordingly, it was 100% compliance? Hindi po ba sa tingin ng COA, eh, medyo kuwan ito, medyo imposible?
Um, Mr. Chair, parang based on other ano, parang okay lang naman po siya?
Kami po ay gumagamit din po ng intelligence fund. Ay, nagaling po ako sa service eh, at alam ko na mahirap gawin ito. I will conduct surveillance in 132 areas in 11 days. Tapos kayo ngayon sa COA, eh, sinasabi niyo na posible pala ito. Samantalang kami on the ground na gumagawa nito, noong ako'y nasa serbisyo, nahihirapan po kami. So, what is your basis na pwedeng sabi na posible ito, Madam COA?
Um, Mr. Chair, there are also deficiencies here.
No, tinatanong ko lang po kayo kasi sa matapu ng COA, yung magconduct ka ng surveillance activities in 132 areas in 11 days, para sa amin po na gumagawa nito in our use of intelligence funds noong ako'y nasa serbisyo, nahihirapan po kami eh. Tapos sa matapalan niyo, posibling posible pala ito. Tama po ba yung aking kaisipan?
Um, Mr. Chair, ang identified lang po ay number of areas, pero pwede din pong iconsider yung, kung ilan po yung, nabig, nag, kung ilang tao po yung pinagspendan ng funds, Mr. Chair.
But the liquidation report does not say so.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair.
In assume na lang niyo yun eh?
Um, Mr. Chair, meron po silang submitted na mga dokumentary evidence.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chair, those would be the questions that I would ask, I have asked from COA. Yun po yung aking nihanda. The others would pertain to Madam Gina F. Acosta. So, marami pong salamat, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to interpret. Thank you.
Thank you po, Congressman Akop. The next interpreter is the Honorable Congressman Rolando Valeriano.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, quick question.
Congressman Ortega, with the indulgence of Congressman Valeriano, Chair would like to recognize Congressman Ortega.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I've noticed that there are some employees from the Office of the Vice President who are here. Are we gonna sit them as a spokesperson? Or they just going to sit around the hall, Mr. Chair?
I was informed a while ago that the spokesman of the Vice Mayor is, Vice, sorry, 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 Vice President is representing the DEEPED, not the Office of the Vice President. But I was told by the Comsec that a while ago, the OBP Chief of Staff, Attorney Solweta Lopez, supposedly is present today, but could not be located as of now. May I know if Attorney Solweta Lopez is here inside the?
Silayka Lopez.
Asset, ah, Silayka, sorry. If Attorney Solayka Lopez is present in this hearing?
Uh, I think Yusek Poa is the spokesperson of the Vice President. Maybe he can answer on the, on your query, considering that he knows all about the OBP?
Yes, would you like to please join us?
Mr. Chairman, good morning.
Yes, morning, Yusek.
I have not seen Yusek Solayka since I arrived this morning. And to be very honest with you, I do not know if she was even here today. But I don't think she's with us at the moment. For the OBP matters, let me just manifest, Mr. Chair, Your Honors, that I only joined OBP po kasi itong August.
Ah, okay.
So, and only as a spokesperson. I am only a consultant in the Office of the Vice President as her spokesperson. So, sa totoo lang po, I would not be competent to answer any questions as regards yung operations pa po talaga ng OBP, sa at this point, Your Honors.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, Congressman Fernandez.
Was she not given authority to answer some queries from this committee?
Do you have any authority from the Office of the Vice President?
Mr. Chair, I was not given for any authority today. I am appearing today because part of the invitations given to the DEEPED family also included my name. So, that is the only reason why I decided to appear po today before you.
Okay. Okay po ba sa inyo yan? Okay, we will not proceed to the, but before I recognize Congressman Valeriano, Chair would like to recognize the presence of Honorable Clarice Ann Hernandez of the Long District of Calamba City. Good morning po, ma'am.
Congressman Kit Flores.
And Congressman Kit Flores. Yes, morning po. Congressman Valeriano, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a bit background lang po. Last August 13, 2024, yung House Committee on Appropriation issue a subpoena duces tecum, requiring the COA to submit, dito po sa amin sa House Committee ng audit report on the confidential fund ng OBP and the DEEPED for the years 2022 and 2023. Pero, bago afternoon, a letter dated August 21, or six days before the House Committee on Approv was scheduled to hear, the OBP, through its Under-Secretary and Chief of Staff, Attorney Lopez, advised COA against complying with the subpoena duces tecum. So, yung katanungan ko po, sa COA Commission on Audit, ke Ms. Martha Rock. Ma'am, ay, wala po yata si Honorable Cordoba?
He's not.
Okay, sa inyo na lang po, ma'am. Kung maalala niyo po, meron pong subpoena duces tecum, requiring the COA to submit to the House Committee in regards to sa report ng confidential fund ng OBP and the DEEPED for the year 2022 and 2023. Tama po?
Um, Your Honor, Mr. Chair, Your Honor.
Please wait to be recognized. Ms. Martha Roxanne Sese, you are recognized.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Your Honor. May I request for a repetition of the question, please?
Nakatanggap po kayo ng ano, ng subpoena duces tecum, requiring the COA, kayo po, to submit to the House Committee the audit report on the confidential fund ng OBP and the DEEPED para sa taong 2022 and 2023. Tama po? Yung letter po is dated August, I think 13, 2024? Uh, August 21?
Uh, Your Honor, may I please refer first to the legal services sector representative? Because I am not privy to that very document.
May I know who will answer? Attorney Camora, please answer.
Um, yes, Mr. Chair, nag, nakatanggap po kami ng sabina.
Yan. Yung August 21, 2024, you receive a letter from the OBP directly to Chairperson Cordoba, and it was personal. Ang sinasabi puro, na kung maalala niyo, pinipigilan ang COA na mag-release ng details. Tama po?
Uh, tama po, Mr. Chair.
Sino po ang nag-receive noong letter?
Uh, Mr. Chair, sa Office of the Chairperson.
Sa Office of the Chair? Uh, binigay po ba, anyway, wala si Chairman, pero baka kaya niya pong sagutin. Binigay po ba kaagad dito personally kay Chairman Cordoba? Or dinampa sa kanyang mga staff?
Uh, Mr. Chair, hindi ko po alam kung kailan nabigay kay Chairperson, pero nareceive po ng ICFAO ng office namin, and then we elevated po the matter to the Chairperson.
Yes. Ano po ang naging aksyon ang COA in regards to that letter?
Um, we complied with the sabina duces tecum, Mr. Chair.
So, ang discretion po kung lawful at reasonable ang pag-comply sa mga subpoena, or kung lawful excuse not to comply, ay tangeng. Tama po, nasa inyo, nasa COA lang?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, pong COA rules.
Yeah, at bilang constitutional independent body, hindi po maaring diktahan basta-basta ang COA, tama po?
Uh, being an independent body, tama po, Mr. Chair.
Lalo na po, kung ito'y in relation to the constitutional duties ng COA, gaya ng pag-o-audit sa ahensya ng kahit anong government agency, tama po?
Um, tama naman po, Mr. Chair.
Under the presumption of regularity, ang COA ay kailangan mag-comply sa mga subpoena. As a matter of course, tama po ba?
Um, tama po, Mr. Chair.
So, did the COA reply?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. We replied to the sabina duces tecum.
Okay. Uh, nakaram po ba na exchange of correspondence, na sagutan yung OBP tsaka yung COA in regards po do sa request nila?
Um, Mr. Chair, parang wala na pong, wala na pong response po.
So, sinunod niyo, sinunod niyo po ba ang directive ng OBP not to comply with the subpoena?
Uh, Mr. Chair, yung, hindi po. Ang nag-comply po kami is yung sa subpoena duces.
So, ang COA po ay sumunod sa subpoena because they agree that Congress does have the power to subpoena these documents, correct?
Uh, Mr. Chair, our rules also allows us to comply to subpoena duces tecum and other lawful orders po.
Yes, ang COA ay sumunod sa subpoena dahil ito'y ini-issue bata sa power to conduct legislative inquiries ng Congress, tama po ba?
Uh, yeah, tama po, Mr. Chair.
And COA likewise agrees that the audit of the confidential funds, which are government funds, are matters of public concern. Tama po ba?
Um, tama.
Tama.
In terms of audit po, Mr. Chair, tama po.
And the public has the right, ano, paano po ginagastos ang pera ng bayan, di po ba?
Um, tama po, Mr. Chair.
And likewise, ang Congresso ay may obligasyon. Kami po dito, nasiguruhing ang pera ng bayan ay ginagastos po sa tamang paraan, tama po?
Um, we submit po sa ano po.
And when the COA complied with the subpoena, ano po ba yung response ng OBP, ng Office of the Vice President? Did the OBP reach out to COA again?
Uh, Mr. Chair, wala po kong alam na nagbigay po sila ng further requests or?
Or letter? Nagpadala ba sila ng communication again? Hindi na po?
Wala na po, Mr. Chair.
Were further attempts made by the OBP to pause or compel COA not to comply with the subpoena, even a phone call or what?
Uh, wala naman po, I'm not aware of any letter or any communication po.
Ah, okay, thank you, Madam. Sa OBP po, meron bang pwedeng sumagot? Wala talaga si Attorney Lopez? Uh, Comsec, how about Attorney Limwell G. Ortonio? Andito po?
Negative as well, Your Honor.
Again?
Mr. Chair?
Wala po.
With the indulgence of the Honorable Valeriano, before we leave the issue on the subpoena duces tecum, Your Honor.
With the indulgence of Honorable, please proceed Congressman Akop.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, may, may I know if we have required the submission of the letter of the Office of the Vice President through Under-Secretary and Chief of Staff Lopez to the COA? Did we require COA to submit a copy of that letter to the committee?
Uh, Mr. Chair, wala po yata kami.
Attorney Camora, before you answer, please wait to be recognized. May I recognize the Comsec?
Uh, Your Honor, thank you. Wala po, Your Honor. However, in the previous meeting, I was directed to write a letter to the Committee on Appropriations Chairperson to request for the documents submitted to them through the subpoena duces tecum filed or issued by the Committee on Appropriations, Your Honor.
Now, uh, may I move, Mr. Chair, that COA submits to us a copy of the letter of the Office of the Vice President through Under-Secretary Lopez?
There's a motion by the Honorable Akop to require COA to submit the letter of the Honorable Vice President through? Through?
Under Secretary Lopez.
Is there any second to the motion? You are seconded, is there any objection hearing on the motions carried?
Mr. Chair, with the permission of Congressman Akop, we have some representatives from the Office of the Vice President available. Baka meron po kayong kopya nung sulat na yun? At kung may kopya po sila, lalo-lalo po nila, baka pwede maibigay na po nila ngayon yung sulat. Uh, Mr. Chair?
Sino pong representative ng OBP, ang nandirito po? Wala po yata.
Mr. Chair?
Sino yan?
Si civilian, di ba?
Please identify yourself, please.
Wait, wait. Um, Mr. Chair, point of, um, point of order lang, no?
What is the point of order?
Yeah, earlier, they were representatives from the OBP. May I ask where they are now?
Your Honor, um, may I be recognized, Your Honor?
Yes, Comsec, you're recognized.
They were located at the corner of the room earlier, Your Honor. Some of the representatives were there. They did not give the committee secretary their names, but they were there and now they are not here, Your Honor.
Are you referring to Attorney Zuleika Lopez?
For clarification, Your Honor, there was an error in recognition of Attorney Zuleika. The observation of Kong Akop is valid, wala po talaga siya.
Ah, wala talaga.
Mga security po yata kanina yun dumating, Your Honor.
Okay, security lang po.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, uh, sino po yun?
Mr. Chair, Congressman Singh, Mr. Chair.
Ay, yes, Congressman Swansing.
Mr. Chair, with regard to the letter being discussed at the moment, I also ask.
um, I also, uh, asked, uh, to confirm with Representative Luistro. This said letter was already requested and brought up during the, uh, second hearing, um, for the OBP budget deliberations. And this letter was already furnished, um, to us during that committee hearing.
So, we already, we are already in receipt of the letter?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, I'll defer to Representative Luistro because during the hearing itself, uh, the CO, the representative from COA turned over that letter to Representative Luistro.
Yes, Congressman Luistro, you are recognized by the Chair.
Mr. Chair, I confirm the manifestation of the Honorable Swansing that during the budget briefing of the OBP, we requested the COA to submit to the Committee, Committee on Appropriations, the copy of the letter of the OBP opposing the subpoena duses tecum issued by the Committee on Appropriations. So, may we inquire from the Comsec if we can get in touch with the Committee on Appro? So, we can be provided a copy of this letter opposing the subpoena, Mr. Chair?
Comsec, please take note of the manifestation of Congresswoman Luistro. Congressman Dan Fernandez, you are recognized.
Just wanted to be clarified on, uh, the submission of that letter that was, uh, given to Honorable, uh, Jinky, uh, uh, Luistro. Uh, can I be, uh, informed, uh, who signed that, uh, letter?
It is a certain Attorney Zul Leika, Chief of Staff of the Office of the Vice President.
Chief of Staff of OBP.
Have we, uh, invite, uh, Attorney Zul Leika?
Comsec, huh? Comsec, did we invite Attorney Zul Leika?
Have we invited?
Did we send an invitation? Yes.
Yes.
And, uh...
Unfortunately, Attorney Zul Leika Lopez is not...
How many times did we, uh, invite, uh, Attorney Zul Leika?
She was invited in the September 18 hearing, Your Honor, and today as well, Your Honor.
So, two times already, but in both occasions, uh, she did not appear.
Have we, uh, issued, Mr. Chairman, a Chocas order?
Yes, Your Honor.
Uh, there's a move, uh, there's a motion already. Uh, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Congresswoman Luistro.
I just wish to manifest the three important arguments that were raised in the said letter. First is, we allegedly violated the separation of power. Second, we violated the due process. And third, we violated the confidential nature of the fund, which during the briefing of, the budget briefing of the Office of the Vice President, we amply addressed already, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, while we are waiting for the copy of that letter from the Committee on Appro, I shared the three arguments which were raised in the said letter. First is the separation of power rule, second is the due process, and third is the confidential nature of the fund. During the budget briefing, Mr. Chair, we amply addressed already these three issues.
Okay, duly noted, Congresswoman Luistro.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, uh, please continue your interpretation, Congressman Valeriano.
Ang problem po, yung kasunod ko sa natanong, in regards dun sa letter na, na ginawa ni Attorney Lopez ay sa OBP na, or any representative from the Office of the Vice President, pero wala po sila kahit isa, Mr. Chair. So, tinatapos ko na po yung pagtatangong ko, at, uh, meron na po bang ano, representative from the OBP?
Wala pa rin po, Comsec.
May I be recognized, Your Honor?
Yes, uh, Comsec, you are recognized.
I was informed by the registration that, um, there was one representative who signed in the registration. Her name is Marie Cristel Axalan, while the rest did not register, Your Honor, and they are not here anymore. Marie Cristel Axalan signed the registration, Your Honor.
She signed in the registration, but she is not physically present.
She was here a while ago.
She was here.
Some, some of them were here a while ago, and now they cannot be located, Your Honor.
Okay.
So, with that, Mr. Chair, tine terminate ko na po yung ibang katanungan ko, at, uh, antay ko nalang po sa susunod na hearing pagka dumating na po yung, uh, Office of the Vice President. Salamat po, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Congr...
Yeah, Mr. Chair, can I just, um...
Congressman, uh, uh, Deputy Secretary, Deputy Speaker, Jay Suarez, you are recognized.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, um, with the indulgence of, um, our next interpreter, I just want to go back dito sa COA natin. Um, Attorney Kamora, opo. Nabanggit niyo po kanina na nakapagsubmit po ng documents tungkol po dun sa liquidation ng 125 million in 11 days, no?
Attorney Kamora?
Um, tama po, Mr. Chair.
Um, can, can you please submit to the committee, uh, the documents that were submitted?
Um, Mr. Chair, uh, since it was already subpoenaed by the, um, Committee on Appropriations, um, we were... we can only comply through subpoena, then po.
Okay. It was subpoenaed by the Committee on Appropriation?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So, nasa Committee on Appropriation po yung documents? Tama po ba?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair.
Maybe we can ask the Comsec to request for a copy of the said, of the said documents?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair. Actually, that is the, um, next motion that I was gonna, uh, push forward is that we request a copy of, um, the documents that were transmitted to the Committee on Appropriations, uh, just so that we can go through these documents, no? Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair?
Of course, and of course, it should also include the 32 areas, no?
Yes. Did you submit the list of the 32 areas covered by the period of December 21 to December 31, 2022?
Um, Mr. Chair, um, we can provide the copies to the committee upon issuance of subpoena, then po.
Upon the issuance of subpoena, duses tecum. Do I hear a motion for the issuance?
So, move, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion to issue a subpoena duses tecum with respect to the, uh, 32 areas covered, uh, covering, uh, December 11, uh, December 21 to December 31, 2022 uh, with respect to the 125 million, uh, confidential fund. Is there any second to the motion?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Julie, si Conde, is there any objection hearing na the motion's carried? Um, yes, Congressman Luistro, you are recognized.
I wish to go back to the letter opposing the subpoena issued by the Congress, specifically the Committee on Appropriations, Mr. Chair. I wish to manifest that the letter is dated August 21, 2024. So, I humbly submit that during this time, Attorney Powa is already connected with the Office of the Vice President, and I wish to believe that he can enlighten us with respect to the questions to be propounded by the Honorable Valeriano, Mr. Chair.
Attorney Powa, would you please, uh, join us?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Attorney Powa.
Yes. Uh, I confirm, uh, the statement made by the Honorable Congresswoman that I was already, in fact, the spokesperson, uh, at that time, uh, August 21, I believe. However, uh, Mr. Chair, um, I really do not have the competence because I am not, uh, an employee of the OBP. I was only engaged to be the spokesperson at that point. And so, I, I was not part of the drafting of such letter and was not part of, uh, anything with that letter. Uh, but, uh, if there's anything that I can contribute, then I will be willing to do so, Mr. Chair.
Would you like to proceed, Congressman Valeriano?
Mr. Chairman, opo.
Mr. Chair, with the indulgence of Representative Valeriano...
Yes, Congressman Nigasansing.
Very quickly lang po. May I, uh, ask Mr. Chair a clarificatory question on the motion a while ago? Um, how many areas po yung covered nung subpoena duses tecum?
132 areas.
Okay. Yun lang, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to clarify because I heard 32 po. So, we just wanted to make sure, uh, 132 is correct. Uh, that's correct, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much po.
Thank you. Just, uh, to, 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 to be clear, the motion was, uh, duly approved with respect to 132 areas. Okay po ba, COA?
Mr...
Yes, uh, Attorney Powa.
Again, my apologies, uh, but again, I just have to at least state for the record, Your Honors, that, uh, the Vice President, uh, did, really did not authorize me to represent her or the OBP in this proceeding po. I, I really am here because I was part of the invitees doon po sa DEP Ed, uh, invite na pinadala po.
So, with that, Mr. Chair, uh, hindi rin nga pwedeng sagutin 'yung mga tanong ko in regards to the OBP to the Office of the Vice President.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please continue.
Gustuhin ko man po kasi hindi po talaga ako authorized, so, uh, I'm afraid whatever I say might also be questioned later on, Your Honors.
Okay.
Hindi talaga po ako inauthorized ng Pisi Presidente natin eh.
Okay. Thank you po. We will now proceed to the next interpreter, uh, the Honorable Dan Fernandez. Yes.
Wala naman po ako masyadong tanong, Mr. Chairman. Medyo... Nakaka-worry lang po talaga tong, um, 125 million per 11 days. Uh, for the information of everybody, I become, uh, became the mayor of, uh, Santa Rosa and, uh, yung confidential fund ko is like, uh, 7 million per quarter. And, uh, it's really hard for me to, uh, uh, to use, ano, to utilize that, uh, amount for, uh, three months. And, uh, this amount is so huge that needs to be, uh, investigated, uh, rightly. Um, dito po sa, Mr. Chairman, you have presented something, and I, I tried to, uh, secure the documents that you have presented a while ago. So, I'll be, uh, dwelling on this, uh, information that, uh, you have, uh, given this, uh, committee. Uh, I hope that the, uh, the, uh, COA have the liberty to say something on this, uh, um, this allowed portion of that 125 million, and, uh, that was issued by, uh, by COA, no? Yung 73 million, um, doon po ba sa purchase of information? Lumalabas po dito that 14 million is the, uh, purchase of, uh, information. And, uh, this was, uh, spent for 11 days. So, basically, it is 1.2 million per day for the purchase of information. What do you, what do you mean by purchase of information? Can you kindly explain to us what is a purchase of information? Mr. Chairman?
Sino pong sasagot? Attorney Kamora, please answer.
Uh, Mr. Chair, based po on the Joint Circular, uh, regarding the guidelines on COA, uh, confidential funds, purchase of information pertains to those information necessary for the formulation and implementation of program activities and projects relevant to the national security and peace and order.
And with the submission of the Office of the President, oh, Office of the Vice President, regarding to these, uh, 14 million that was submitted by them, you deem it right to, uh, to disallow the 14 million?
Um, Mr. Chair, 14 million purchase inform...
Of information?
Purchase of information. It's not part of the notice of disallowance, Mr. Chair.
The, uh, 14 million is not, uh, part of the, uh, 73 million?
It was allowed po in audit, Mr. Chair.
Ah, the purchase of information was allowed?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The only...
14 million for the purchase of information, you allowed it?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair.
And your basis is what?
Uh, there are documentary evidence of...
What are the documentary evidences that was submitted to you? If you have the liberty to say it to us?
Uh, Mr. Chair, since it's already on the merits of the case, since it's already touching on the merits of the case, and we can only comment on those that we have submitted to the, um, uh, through the subpoena duses tecum, and since the notice of disallowance is not yet final, uh, we cannot yet, um, discuss on the merits of the notice of this allowance.
Okay, I respect that. So, um, medyo na, na-worry lang ako dito sa purchase of information that amounted to, uh, 14 million for 11 days, and, uh, you have, uh, approve it?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Chair, since it's not yet final, um, it's only...
Have this, have this, uh, ito nalang po, uh, hindi naman to magi-incriminate sa inyo, no? So, yung bang 14 million, may kasama mga equipments na binili?
Um, ibang item po, Mr. Chair, ang equipments.
So, yung purchase of information is all about information or datas that you have gathered that you have approved sa COA?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair.
Um, Congressman Fernandez, if I just make, uh, point of clarification?
Um, uh, Deputy Speaker, Jay?
May, may I just be, um, informed as to what type of information was purchased?
Uh, before you answer, Attorney Kamora, let me first recognize the Honorable, uh, Joseph Stephen Paduano of Abang Linggo, and the Honorable Vice Chairman, Senior Vice Chairman Ben Benido Abante. Please continue.
Um, Mr. Chair, uh, again, we cannot comment on it since it forms part of the merits of the case, but, um, I would like to inform the body po that the entire ND is still subject to, uh, appeal to the adjudication of the, um, Commission proper. These are just, um, the judgment of the audit.
Yeah, I, I know, I do understand the position of, um, Attorney Kamora. I'm just... My question is, what type of information? Kasi sabi po dito purchase of information. Ano yung info, anong classing information yon? Is it, um...
Um, Mr. Chair, I could, I could only say that, um, these are part of, uh, what is required under the Joint Circular, which is this, um, information necessary for the formulation and implementation of programs, activities, and projects relevant to national security and peace and order.
Okay. Now, I'm, I'm just, uh, curious kasi ngayon ako nakakita ng item na purchase of information. So, anyway, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, Congressman Fernandez, and I, uh, ate into your time.
Hindi, kasi, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I, uh, I agree with the Congressman, uh, DS, uh, JJ. I agree with him, no? Precisely because, uh, if you were going to compute 14 million divided mo sa 11, that is 1.2 million for the, uh, information that, uh, wanted to be, uh, purchased by the Office of the Vice President and was approved by the COA, and that worries me a lot, no? If, uh, this information entails, uh, siguro kung mga four months yan or as in a one day yan, acceptable yan, but in a day? 1.2?
And if purchase of information a day? Pwede po bang isan tanong lang?
Yes, sir.
Yung po bang, uh, 14 million na yon eh, na information, sa isang tao lang po ba yon? O maraming tao po yon?
Mr. Chair, hindi naman po yon sa isang tao lang.
Okay, just to big, ilan pong tao? Kung alam lang po niyo?
Um, I don't have the information right now.
At kung magkano po kada tao ang binigay po, or para po sa purchase of information na yon? At kung saan po mga area?
Mr. Chair, uh, details na po siya ng audit, so you could, um, we could answer through if we are duly issued po, uh, subpoena, subpoena duses tecum.
Is there any motion? Do I hear any motion?
Yes, oh, well, I, I move that, uh, we, uh, uh, we, uh, um, ano ba? I, I move that, uh, we, uh, subpoenaed the, uh, duses tecum, uh...
The detailed information?
All those, uh, documents pertaining to the purchase of information, the detailed information about it.
Is there any second to the motion?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Julie, si Conde, is there any objection hearing na the motion's carried?
Secondly, uh, Mr. Chairman, this is the payment of reward. Uh, sa payment of reward, you, uh, utilized 10 million. The Office of the Vice President utilized 10 million, and, uh, this was spent for 11 days. So, almost a million a day for the reward, payment of reward, cash, cash. Same thing, COA. How this, um, 10 million was utilized daily by the Office of the Vice President? Can you kindly educate me on, uh, how this happened? A, a million a day for...
A million a day for payment of cash reward? Was there any news about the cash reward that was given by the Office of the Vice President to any individuals for that matter pertaining to this payment of reward in cash by the Office of the Vice President?
Um, Mr. Chair, again, it was part of the merits.
Again, it will be a part of the documents, of the detail.
Although, Mr. Chair, we have indicated in the ND the reason why the rewards were disallowed. They were not able to satisfy us with the documentary requirement.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, COA. Uh, you mean this 10 million is part of the disallowed by COA?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair.
Ah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry about it. Oh, so sige, okay, so disallowed to, okay, sige. So have they given you some information on, or the detailed information about this payment of cash reward?
Um, they have submitted compliance documents, Mr. Chair. But we deemed it not sufficient. We deemed it not sufficient to answer the requirements of the Joint Circular.
Can we also, in that case, Mr. Chairman, may I move to subpoena also those du Sestecum? Uh, those documents pertaining to the payment of cash reward?
There is a motion by the Honorable Fernandez to subpoena du Sestecum with respect to the payment of cash reward. Is there any objection? Is there any second to the motion?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Duly seconded, is there any objection hearing ng motions carried?
Uh, punta namang po tayo sa rental of other incidental expenses relative to the maintenance of safe houses. How many safe houses have the Office of the Vice President have?
Um, Mr. Chair, again, it was part of the merits, however, may I just say?
Hindi na merit siya man yun, ano, Gloria? Tinatanong ko ilan lang 'yung mga, para malaman namin. Kasi, of course, merong mga opisina ng Office of the Vice President sa buong Pilipinas. Are those offices that are being mentioned by the Office of the Vice President all over the country constitute also as the safe house of the OBP? Eh, nakalagay dito, uh, meron kayong maintenance eh, ng safe houses eh? Do they have like 10, 18, 20, 30, 40?
Um, Mr. Chair, I do not have information right now on...
Can you kindly submit to us also, I move also to, ano? Kasi, Mr. Chairman, before we move for that, kasi 16 million were, no, no, uh, yeah, 16 million was spent for the, for 11 days for the Office of the Vice President dun po sa mga safe houses for maintenance. Maintenance of the safe houses, 16 million was spent for 11 days for these safe houses. Kaya nga tinatanong ko po, ilan po 'yung safe houses na yun? At bakit gumastos tayo ng 16 million for that purpose for 11 days?
At kung saan?
Yes, oo, at kung saan 'yung mga safe houses na yun? So I move that we subpoena also those, ano, documents.
Um, there is a motion by the Honorable Dan Fernandez to subpoena the information with respect to the safe houses of the Office of the Vice President. Is there a second to the motion? Duly seconded, is there any objection hearing ng motions carried?
'Yung po purchase of supplies which cost us 35 million for 11 days? Madam Gloria, purchase of supplies, ano-ano po ba 'tong mga supplies na to? Etan po ba 'yung mga chairs, tables, desktop?
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, part of it po, 'yung table chairs that were disallowed and some of it, um, nila nakaindicate po as rewards, so it was also disallowed?
When you say disallow, um, were you able to get some information? Who supplied this, uh, this, uh, purchase of different items? Do you have the, uh, the information about the contractors and the suppliers?
Uh, Mr. Chair, based on the Joint Circular, these supplies, materials, and equipment for confidential operations are not done through regular procedures without compromising the information?
I know, I know. What I'm trying to tell you is that wala naman bidding siya eh. Hindi naman siya nabibidding talaga ang confidential fund. What I'm trying to point out, Mr. Chairman, is have they submit the supplier or the contractor of those purchase items? Siyempre, may not purchase, may nag-ano niyan eh, may nag-supply niyan eh. Kilala niyo ba, nagbinigay ba 'yung information about it?
Um, we only received documentary evidence of payment, Mr. Chair.
Hindi mo sinasagutan tanong Gloria eh. Ang tinatanong ko kung merong ano, merong sinubmit na supplier, tsaka contractor. Titignan ka pa sa likod? Huwag ka nagtumingin sa likod. Wait, 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 ano bang position mo sa COA?
Uh, Attorney five po, Mr. Chair.
And what is your responsibility in the commission and audit?
Um, review of the audit po, of, review of the audit.
Review of the audit? Ano ginagawa ng review of the audit?
Um, tinitingnan ko, Chair, 'yung...
So nakikita mo na, huwag ka nagtumingin sa likod. So anong, 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 ano nakita mo dun? So binigay sa iyo 'yung 35 million na purchase ng goods for 11 days? Siyempre, nakita mo 35 million, 11 days? Wow, ang bigat nito, 35 million, 11 days? Sino 'yung nag-supply na tong mga supplier na to? Diba? Yan ang trabaho mo eh. So sino 'yung mga supplier?
Uh, Mr. Chair, kasi, um...
Sino 'yung mga supplier? Na nakita mo?
Um, sa merits na po ka...
Oh my goodness.
Hindi, ang point po ni Congressman Dan Fernandez, hindi ka ba nagtaka? 'Yung po 'yung puntong, 'yun po 'yung gusto niyang ipunto. Hindi po ba kayo nagtaka na nagkaroon ng purchase na worth 35 million in 11 days? Tama po ba yun?
Yes, oo, 35 million, ako naman, kahit ako, mayor ako eh. Diba nakita ko, nagpurchase ako ng ganito, 35 million in 11 days? Magugulat ako, ano-ano ba to? So ikaw, bilang ikaw, 'yung parang COA, nakikita mo yan? Nakita mo 35 million in 11 days? Supplies, sino supplier nito? Diba? Hindi, hindi, hindi maapektoan ang merit nito. Tinatanong ko lang kung sino 'yung supplier. Now, kung binigay nila 'yung supply, binayaran nila, at nakita nating above board, so what's the problem? Okay. But unfortunately, magugulat ka, 11 days, 35 million? For purchase of supplies? Kaya tinatanong ko lamang, sino 'yung supplier?
Uh, Mr. Chair, hindi po ako makapagsabi ngayon ng...
Alam mo, Gloria, nagsisinuwaling ka. Don't, please. Sabihin mo lang ako sino 'yung supplier?
Um, sir, ang sinubmit lang po talaga nila is evidence, documentary evidence of payment. Hindi na po 'yung...
So wala 'yung supplier?
Opo.
Are you sure? Wala do sa sinubmit sa inyo?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Because we are, uh, we moved for the, those documents a while ago.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Kasi pag nakita namin meron dun, tatamaan ka dyan. Sige ka.
Uh, Mr. Chair, ang sinubmit po nila sa amin is 'yung documentary evidence of payment, but wala po 'yung mga suppliers.
Wala 'yung supplier? Oh, sige, I will accept that momentarily. Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, punta po tayo dun sa, ano, sa provision of medical and food aid. 40 million for 11 days. Again, wala rin 'yung supplier dito?
Wala din po, Mr. Chair, kaya part din po siya ng disallowed.
Did you ask for, did you ask the Office of the Vice President to submit all the contractors and suppliers of all these supplies and the medical and food aid?
Um, we asked them to explain po the...
But did you ask for the supplier?
Um, normally, Chair, hindi po.
Why?
Um, we just do our audit based on the requirements under the Joint Circular.
I will accept that, but, uh, Mr. Chairman, at least, I think it is imperative for us to find out the contractor and suppliers of all those supplies that was purchased by the Office of the Vice President. Not because, um, uh, ano tayo, um, what do you call this? Medyo... Oh, hindi natin pinupuntili ata mas. Thank you for that word. Hindi natin pinupuntili 'yung mga supplier and contractor. What we are after, Mr. Chairman, is the amount, the huge amount that is what's spent for 11 days. And this is something extraordinary. Hindi naman po siya ganong kasimple that 40 million will be spent on medical and food aid? 11 days? Tapos 'yung supplies, 35 million for 11 days? Purchase of information, 14 million for 11 days? And ito pa, 'yung lastly, 'yung payment of incentives on traveling relative to the, to the confidential operations? How does it work? Paano nagbabayad ng incentives or traveling? Can you kindly explain it to us? Because we spent 10 million in 11 days?
Uh, Mr. Chair, they gave an explanation on this po that uh, those are actually rental of transport vehicles related to confidential activities po.
And according de, hindi tayo kumuha ng mga receipt galing sa mga, sa mga, ano, sa mga operators ng mga vehicles?
Uh, Mr. Chair, ang requirement lang po kasi is documentary evidence of payment.
Okay, um, thank you so much. With that, ano?
Are you done?
Yes, I'm done, Fernando, sir.
Tapos na po ba kayo?
Ah, okay, am I done? Ah, okay. I, I think for the meantime, Mr. Chairman, I'll be retraining from asking more questions considering that I spent almost five minutes in the interpellation. So I'll be yielding back my time. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you po. Uh, we will now proceed to the next interpreter, the Honorable Deputy Speaker, Jay Suarez. You're recognized, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Paduano, what's the pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, with the indulgence of Deputy Speaker JJ, may I ask a clarificatory question lang po with regards to the witness, our spokespersons present in today's hearing?
Yes, please continue with the indulgence of the Honorable JJ Suarez.
While going into this room, na-monitor ko po na 'yung sa OBP po, eh, wala 'yung mga persons that was mentioned and invited last hearing. Uh, particularly 'yung SDO po, 'yung Gina Acosta, tsaka 'yung Julieta Villadel Rey, which is the Chief Consultant. But as Chairman Acop mentioned, may shukos na daw to ngayon, 'yung dalawa. Tama po ba? 'Yung dalawa mismo? 'Yung Chief Accountant at saka 'yung SDO. Tama?
Comsec?
Yes, uh, Your Honor, um, there was a motion kanina, five po 'yung inisuhan ng shukos orders, Your Honor. It was Attorney Zulayka Ortonio Sanchez, Ms. Acosta, and Ms. Julieta Villadel Rey.
Now, Mr. Chairman, just to, just to ask this question. So we cannot, uh, the OBP, the Office of the Vice President cannot answer queries from this representation of the members of this committee? As of now? Who is the highest?
Wala po kasing representative dito eh, ang Office of the Vice, wala po.
Wala po ba? How about the spokesperson, which is Mr. Michael Poa?
Um, as, as kanina po, binanggit po ni Attorney Poa na siya po ay nandirito to represent DEP Ed.
Ah, you're here to represent DEP Ed, not the Office of the Vice President?
Please, please, Attorney Poa.
Yes, uh, yes, Mr. Chair, that is correct. I am here again because I was part of the list of invitees as far as DEP Ed is concerned po.
How about sa OBP, you're not already part of the Office of the Vice President?
Wala po ako sa list ng invitees.
No, no, but, uh, hindi, 'yung official function mo ngayon?
I'm, I'm just a consultant po of the Office of the Vice President.
Consultant for what?
A spokesperson po.
Spokesperson, ng OBP?
Opo.
And you cannot answer queries from this committee? With regards to the OBP confidential fund?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm afraid I'm really not authorized to, by the Vice President or anyone from the OBP to represent it.
But with regards to the DEP Ed, you cannot ask queries? You can answer queries?
Uh, yes, yes, Your Honor.
Okay. So wala po, walang OBP dito?
Kanina po may nagpakita, but unfortunately, nawawala na po yata. Comsec?
Chairman, is it correct that, uh, certain Monsayak is present? Is he present?
Attorney Monsayak, are you present?
Mr. Chairman, can we ask, give the microphone?
Attorney Monsayak? Do you represent the OBP?
Uh, good afternoon, Your Honors, Mr. Chair. Uh, I do not represent the OBP. I'm a private person already, Your Honor.
Are invited in today's hearing? Do you receive invitation? Did you receive invitation for this committee?
Uh, yes, Your Honor, I was part of the invitation, the list of people invited for the DEP Ed query.
For the DEP Ed na man?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Comsec, is it correct that Mr. Monsayak is invited for the DEP Ed query? But of course, you're part during the previous, during this topic being discussed with regards to the OBP budget, you're still part of it, diba? The time?
Uh, no, Your Honor, I left OBP at October 2023 and I'm not part in any way of the confidential funds issue, Your Honor.
Comsec?
Anyway, Mr. Chairman.
Your Honor, Your Honor, Attorney Ronald Monsayak, Reynold Monsayak was invited for, from the DEP Ed roster as Assistant Secretary for Procurement, Your Honor. Just to clarify.
Okay. Congressman Paduano?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, the Chair would like to recognize the Deputy Speaker Jay Suarez. Please proceed to your interpellation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I just wanted to follow the line of questioning, um, um, started by Congressman Dan Fernandez. Um, again to the COA, ma'am, magandang tanghali po sa inyo. Can you show the slide, please? Yeah. Um, ma'am, sinubmit po sa COA ang accomplishment report ng fiscal year 2022 sa confidential funds. Tama po ba ito?
Tama po, Mr. Chair.
Ayon sa accomplishment report, fully spent ang 125 million. Tama po ba ito?
Tama po, Mr. Chair.
Ito pong 125 million ay naka-breakdown into more specific items. Am I correct?
Uh, tama po, Mr. Chair.
And to enumerate, uh, how the 125 million was spent? Um, item one, purchase of information. Item two, payment of reward. Item three, rental of other incidental expenses relative to the maintenance of safe houses. Item number four, purchase of supplies. Item number five, provision of medical and food aid. Item number six, payment of incentives for traveling relative to confidential operations. Is this correct?
Uh, tama po, Mr. Chair.
So can you confirm that this is the breakdown reflected in the accomplishment report printed on the screen right now?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, 'yan po 'yung nasa utilization report.
Opo. Napansin ko lang po, ma'am, na kung titignan po natin 'yung mga amounts, very specific, no whole number po siya. 14, 10, 16, 35, 40, and 10. Walang butal, ma'am? Buong-buo?
Mr. Chair, dito po sa, dito po sa accomplishment report nila, uh, ganyan po, buo-buo?
Buong-buo, oo. Uh, hindi ito estimate or budget, diba? Hindi naman ito estimate or budget. Am I correct?
'Yan na po 'yung utilized amount nila, Mr. Chair.
So what you're, what we're seeing is the liquidation, actual cost. Ito po 'yung ma binili na medical, food aid, sakto 40 million po ang total cost and price. Am I correct?
Uh, tama po, Mr. Chair.
Walang sukli, walang kulang. Uh, tama po?
Mr. Chair, 'yan lang po 'yung contents ng utilization report po nila, Mr. Chair.
Sususugan po lang po 'yung tanong ni Deputy Speaker. When you say utilize, ibig sabihin nabili na, nagamit na. Tama po ba?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair.
Please continue.
Nakakapagtaka lang kasi, kasi siyempre, pag kunyari mamamalengke ka, tapos nagbigay ka ng 5,000 pesos na pamalengke, usually bumabalik kasi 'yung mga goods nandoon at may kasamang sukli. Dito lang, sakto lang 'yung amount, ano, talagang buo lang siya. Uh, matanong ko lang, ma'am, dito po sa mga napaggastusan, may kasama po ba itong mga resibo?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, po silang sinadmit na documentary evidence of payment.
Ah, wala?
Documentary evidence of payment po.
Meron?
Meron po.
Okay, um, and this were already um, requested from your office to be submitted to the committee, am I correct? Sa pinadjuces tek ko kanina, no?
Uh, hindi po yata 'yun kasama, Mr. Chair.
Um, so therefore, Mr. Chair, I move that uh, uh, we request the same documents, and uh, and uh, and I move that uh, that said documents be submitted to the Committee on Good Government. Uh, the documents pertaining to the liquidation report with regards to um, item, ito na, ito na po lahat ng items, siguro para mapag-aralan natin ang buo, from items uh, A up to?
F?
F, Mr. Chair.
Is there any second to the motion? Julie Sekended, is there any objection hearing then the motion is carried?
Thank you very much. So, um, so dito po mga, ma'am, sa mga nabili pong mga medical and food aid, 40 million. Alam niyo po ba kung anong klase medisina at pagkain ang binili?
Uh, wala pong information, Mr. Chair.
Wala po kayong information, so hindi po sinadmit ito?
Uh, hindi po very detailed ang documentary evidence of payment.
So, there are documentary evidence that were submitted, am I correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Um, are you, are you in possession of these documentary evidence right now?
Right now, Mr. Chair, wala po.
Can you expound on these documentary evidence that you are saying that were submitted, however lacking?
Hmm, Mr. Chair, uh, that is already parts of the merits of the case, so we can only um, comply po through Sabina.
Okay, I therefore move, Mr. Chair, for uh, although meron na po tayong Sabina Juces tek ko para sa mga documents, no? Matanong ko lang, ma'am, kanina niyo pa binabanggit 'yung case, ano pong kaso tong bina, kanina kanina niyo pa inuulit na nababanggit?
Um, Mr. Chair, ano, pa-clarify po?
Sabi niyo po kasi, this is part of a case, this is part of a case, I think you mentioned it maybe four or five times. Can I just be informed of what case you are pertaining to?
Uh, Mr. Chair, 'yung notice of disallowance po kasi is um, an audit action of COA na hindi po final, so um, they have an opportunity po to appeal on, uh, to appeal the notice of disallowance, so um, we cannot uh, we cannot just divulge information about it po. Uh, kumbaga, it's, it's still ongoing, it's not yet final.
Yes, I know, I understand that, but what is the case? You said there's a case, ano 'yung kaso?
Hi, Mr. Chair, um.
Kasi when you say a case, usually it's a case filed in court, a case that was, that's pertaining to a certain activity already in the judicial system, so what, what case are you pertaining to?
Um, Mr. Chair, may I correct myself then, that um, it is not a case, a case, but uh, the audit actions po of?
Therefore, there's no case, ma'am.
Uh, non. It is, it may, it is a case, pero it is uh, civil in nature po.
Oh, admin, so and anyway, yeah, but in any case, um.
Yes, Congressman Paduano?
Mr. Chairman, I do disagree with the position of COA, because well in fact, we are, you, you were, you were issued a, a subpoenaed notice tiko with regards to the notice of disallowance, diba? And you submitted it to the committee, tama?
Tama po, Mr. Chair.
Oh, sinadmit you nga 'yung highlights eh, all we are asking is to justify this, we're not talking about the case, we're just talking about if indeed the N D, not you have all the highlights of such uh, uh, 'yung ginawa niyo with regards to the budget of OBP, is indeed, tama? So why, why, what's stopping you from submitting all those supplement, all those attachments? Kasi nandito na nga eh, diba?
And, and before you answer, just to clarify, uh, COA, um, let me read the provision under the Rules of Procedure Governing Inquiries in Aid of Legislation. Section 1, Power to Conduct Inquiries, Paragraph 2 provides that the filing or pendency of a case before any court, tribunal, or quasi-judicial or administrative body shall not stop or abate any inquiry conducted to carry out a legislative purpose. So kahit po 'yung mga sinatawag po nating subjudice, eh, hindi po, hindi po kami covered nun. So please, uh, answer COA. You are, please identify yourself, Attorney?
Uh, Erwin Lapitan.
Attorney Lapitan, please, continue.
Yes, Mr. Chair, um, i-clarify ko lang po na ang N D po ay audit decision po, it's an audit decision by the auditor po, and uh, the nature of an notice of disallowance is civil in nature po.
There is no case yet filed?
It's actually a case before the case I?
No, you cannot, you cannot prosecute, kasi kayo rekomendatory lang, just like committee.
Yes, yes, we agree, Mr. Chair, that we don't have the authority to prosecute.
Also, what's stopping you from giving us all, all those uh, attachments?
Uh, Mr. Chair, it may affect, yes.
Sedere, naposim ako, Chairman, what's stopping you?
Please continue.
From giving all those attachments being requested by this committee, what will influence you?
Uh, Mr. Chair, it may affect the adjudication process by the Commission proper, and uh, we?
Sedere, sedere, isahin po natin, ano 'yung first reason niyo? Isahin muna natin, it will affect the adjudication of the Commission proper?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair.
In what manner?
Um, uh, of course, Mr. Chair, the Commission, uh, the COA has a constitutional uh, power to adjudicate, therefore, any um, information that may affect its adjudication procedures or processes, uh, and considering that the notice of disallowance is not yet final, then?
But, but, you know, inquiries in aid of legislation, kailangan namin dito mga dokumento. Now, eto, notice of disallowance, diba? N D niyo, eto 'yung highlights, oh, how can you justify to us if you cannot submit the, the attachments and the documents that, that uh, that uh, that gives the result of this notice of disallowance? Simply, simply, oh, it cannot, it cannot influence?
Yes, Mr.
The, the Commission proper?
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, we will comply upon issuance of the Sabina.
Oh, hindi, nagissue na nga eh?
Yes.
Diba, Mr. Chairman, nagissue na nga?
Yes, we already.
Hindi, ang hindi ko lang makasapakse, 'yung reasoning niyo na it will affect the, the possible decision of the, of the Commission proper, because well in fact, sabi ko nga kaya nung nakaran pa, it will take six months, diba? Tama, six months, diba? Before it, it goes through with Commission proper, diba?
Uh, Mr. Chair, the appeal process?
Kaya nga, may appeal, because of the appeal, diba? Now, ang hindi ko maintindihan, but you sa sabihin, you will give your, that reason, then you cannot submit because it will affect. Well, in fact, I talked to your Chairman yesterday, and it is not a valid reason. And uh, please don't push me to invite your Chairman dito. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Before you continue, Deputy Speaker, the Chair would like to recognize the presence of the Honorable Edward VP Maceda of Fort Dist, Fort District Manila. Please continue, Deputy Speaker.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Um, you mentioned Attorney Lapitan kanina na it's the, there's a process of appeal, no? Has an appeal been made?
Um, as of today, uh, as of this date, uh, Mr. Chair, we don't have information on whether the uh, concerned agency appealed.
Okay, so in other words, wala pa. Are you gonna give a different answer, ma'am, or?
Attorney Gamora?
Um, Mr. Chair, in addition to what uh, my colleague has mentioned, um, usually po pag nagappeal 'yung um, nagappeal 'yung agency, uh, of course, it's the CP that uh, makes the decision, so they, they ask the sectors, the uh, the office from where the N D for?
May, 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 may question, you know, just yes or no?
Opo.
Has an appeal, has an appeal been made? 'Yun lang namang po 'yung tanong ko, so eh.
Umapila daw po ba sila?
As far as it po, wala pa pong, wala pa pong order sa amin na mag uh, comment on any appeal po.
Okay, so in other words, wala pa rin?
On, on the part of ICFA, wala pa po.
Kasi wala pa rin kayong, okay, so going back lang po tayo dun sa um, tinatalakay ko kanina, um, kanina meron po nabanggit na, can you show the slide, please? So, ito nabanggit po ito ni Congressman Fernandez kanina, 'yung rental ng safe house, that's again, sakto 16 million po ang total. Um, COA, can you please uh, inform us, how many safe, safe houses are we talking about?
Um, wala po akong information on the number of safe houses, Mr. Chair.
So, wait, okay, um, I'm trying to digest this. Walang number of safe houses?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, since our audit is just based on the joint circular, we, we just determine based on what is required under the joint circular, Mr. Chair.
But you, you conducted an audit, correct? So, and in your audit, you should, you should be, you should have determined uh, the specifics and details of the items, correct?
Uh, Mr. Chair, it's not one of the items required under the joint circular, what is required is the documentary evidence of payment.
So, in the documentary evidence that was presented to you, the question is, how many safe houses?
Um, it was not identified in the documentary uh, evidence of payment, what was identified were the number of people who uh, received the payment.
So ano pong, so medyo suspicious po tong 16 million para sa safe houses, kasi kayo na din na nagsabi na walang documentary evidence ang isinadmit patungkol sa mga detalye dito?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, um, based on your audit experience, experience, um, aren't these red flags?
Uh, Mr. Chair, hindi pa ganun ka extensive ang experience ko, but um, since these are confidential funds.
Okay, anyway, so kunyari magfocus po tayo sa um, 35 million na purchase of supplies. Uh, again, do you know the details of these supplies?
Uh, just what is included in the documentary evidence of payment, Mr. Chair.
And in the documentary evidence that was submitted, what were the uh, specifics of these supplies?
Um, there's no identification, Mr. Chair.
So basta bumili na ng supplies?
Uh, based on the document, Mr. Chair.
Hindi sinabi kung ano, kung ilan, kung anong klase, kung saan gawa, basta bumili ng supplies?
Uh, it's not a requirement po under the joint circular, Mr. Chair.
Yes, no, I mean, I'm asking you to say yes or no, correct, so basta nagsamit na sila, bumili kami ng supplies. Kasi you know, we need to thresh this out, because if you want to come up with a law, uh, it is important for us to find out where the loopholes in auditing are, diba? Kasi dito nakikita natin, may mga specific amounts na malalaki, kaso lang based on documentary evidence, hindi supported kung paano ginastos, hindi supported kung, kung may resibo, hindi supported kung ilan, so I think, you know, this is another piece of legislation that we can push forward, Mr. Chair, dahil ito namang pong ginagawa natin is in aid of legislation. Uh, ito din po, balikan din po natin, oh, ma'am, ito pong provisions ng medical supplies and food aid, nabanggit po ba kung kanino po ibinigay, o sino 'yung mga recipients itong food aid na po ito?
Uh, Mr. Chair, naka-identify 'yung names dun sa documentary evidence of payment, pero um, hindi po, hindi po pwedeng mag-divulge ng mapangalan.
Ah, okay, but 'yung?
Uh, Mr. Chair, can I interject, please?
Please continue, uh, Vice Chair Abante.
Uh, ano, ano nakalagay is documentary evidence? Ano nakalagay doon?
Um.
Nakalagay ba doon 'yung liquidation nila, o na, for example, 'yung 35 million na supplies? Is that properly liquidated in the uh, documentary evidence?
Uh, Mr. Chair, 'yung liquidation report po nila is maraming documents po, um, the documentary evidence of payment is just that po, 'yung evidencing the payment, but the liquidation report, there is the liquidation report, there, there are these other reports po.
Iba 'yun, iba 'yun, iba 'yun liquidation report, the documentary evidence?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, supporting document.
Ano, ano, ano pagkakaiba nun?
'Yung liquidation report po is 'yung um, pinaka, 'yung parang cover letter po, um, 'yung pinaka-liquidation voucher nila, uh, nakaspecify po doon kung sino 'yung, um, it is uh, certified correct by kung sino man 'yung SDO, uh, certified nung kanyang immediate supervisor, and then certified by the accounting that the supporting document is.
Pero, I just would like to know, uh, kanina, uh, Deputy Speaker JJ asked about the 35 million supplies, no, ah? Okay, and then he asked about uh, kanino binigay 'yan, ano nangyari dyan, so doon ba sa liquidation report nakalagay doon kung kanino binigay ang supplies na 'yan, kung ano 'yung mga supplies na 'yan, doon pa nakalagay sa liquidation report?
Uh, sa liquidation report mismo, Mr. Chair, wala po doon, kasi ito po 'yung general na the whole, pertaining to the whole amount, 'yung documentary evidence of payment po 'yung details.
Okay, how can you properly audit if, for example, like uh, kulang-kulang ang nakalagay sa liquidation report? I mean, the thing is, uh, it is the duty of the Office of the Vice President to liquidate, correct?
Uh, that is correct.
And in the liquidation report, it is the duty of the, of the Vice President to tell the COA, uh, kung saan nagamit 'yun, kung sinong, kung anong klase supply 'yun, kung magkano ang pagkakabili nun, at kung kanino ibinigay 'yun, and that should be in the audit report, am I right?
Uh, Mr. Chair, wala pong audit report pagdating sa uh, Confidential Fund, we just issue the audit actions after the, uh, after we audit the liquidation report.
This is very interesting, Mr. Chair, uh, why don't you have an audit report?
Um, Mr. Chair, uh, we just, uh, based on the joint circular, andun po 'yung functions ng ICFA. Um, andito lang po is uh, issuing AOM NSR N D addressed to the COA, or the Head of Agency, Mr. Chair, and then keep records of all the, those issued na audit actions po. And then prepare, prepare?
What, what are you referring, what are you referring to? Are you referring to the, it, it says, you're saying that there is no audit report, am I right?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, there is no audit report, but uh, there are audit actions that are issued.
There are audit action?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So how, how do you, where do you put the, the, the audit actions as reported? What do you call that?
The audit actions, Mr. Chair, are the Audit Observation Memorandum, the Notice of Suspension, and the Notice of Disallowance.
Mr. Chair, is that submitted to this committee? Not yet, no? So I'd like to make a motion that we uh, we subpoena the documents, uh, the audit of action, diba? And the liquidation report to be submitted here in this committee, so I'm, uh, I'm, uh, so I move, uh, Mr. Chair.
Is there any second to the motion? Julie Sekended, hearing then, uh, is there any objection, hearing then the motion is carried? Ma'am, uh?
Thank you, thank you.
Sir, may tatanong lang po ako, pwede po makita uli 'yung slide kanina?
'Yung slide?
Ma'am, uh, eh, pakibaba po, pakibaba, pakibaba po, 'yung kaninang itemized, 'yung kaninang itemized po, 'yan, pakilakihan po ng konti. Ma'am, 'yung dito po sa uh, purchase of supplies worth 35 million, uh, wala po kayong idea kung ano 'yung item neto? uh, wala po kayong idea kung ano 'yung item neto?
Kung ano lang po 'yung nasa documentary evidence of payment.
Which is, ano po?
Which is 'yung names po ng recipient.
Entende, pero 'yung supplies, wala?
Uh, wala po, Mr. Chair.
Hindi po ba kayo nagtaka na 'yung nilagay po nilang thirty-five million dito, eksakto?
Uh, Mr. Chair-
Napakalaki po nitong amount, tapos eksakto pong thirty-five million. Wala man lamang pong butal, like thirty-four point, uh, thirty-four million nine hundred fifty thousand, or thirty-one million four hundred fifty thousand. Hindi po ba kayo nagtaka na bumili ng supplies, tapos eksaktong, eksakto pong thirty-five million?
Um, Mr. Chair, uh, if you will look at the notice of disallowance po, na-extract na po namin 'yung, um, part ng supplies which are part of the reward. Kaya sa notice of disallowance, hindi na po siya ganyan na buo-buong amount. Um-
So ano pong ibig sabihin niyo, pakipaluanan po niyo?
Uh, based on, based on the, uh, after po ng, uh, AOM po kasi, nag-submit sila ng mga compliance, so may mga na-explain na portions. So, kaya sa notice of disallowance po, it's not exactly the same as kung ano 'yung nasa utilization report nila.
So magkaiba po 'yung nakalagay sa utilization, at saka dun sa-
Sa notice of disallowance po, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so kaya nga po, kaya po niyo pinlog down.
Opo, kaya po-
Dahil merong ano, medyo may problema, tama po ba?
May, opo, may ina-count po namin.
Yun po tinatanong ko, tama po ba? Kaya po niyo pinlog down dahil meron pong problema kayo nakita.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair.
At isa po sa problema, dahil nga po dun sa amount, parang medyo hindi po nagtutugma.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair.
Sa evidensya po na kanila sinumite, tama po ba?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Sa susunod, 'yung provision of medical and food aid, eksakto rin ito, forty million. So, hindi rin po ba kayo nagtaka? Bakit eksakto pong pagbili ng medical at saka food aid?
Uh, again, Mr. Chair-
Again.
Binis namin sa documentary evidence of payment, so hindi po exactly ganyan na forty million.
So ibig sabihin, iba 'yung utilization na nilalagay nila dito, iba rin po 'yung pinipresenta sa inyong evidensya, tama po ba? Or documentary evidence, tama po ba?
Sa pagkacategorize po nila, Mr. Chair.
So magkaiba po?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair.
At kaya po niyo pinlog down dahil may disparity?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair.
So possibly-
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to ask, uh, are we referring to the, uh-
Thirty-five million and forty million?
The complete confidential fund of the Office of the Vice President?
Etto po.
Are we referring on that? If it's been, this are the two years now since, uh, the Vice President was President.
Etto po for the period covering December twenty-one to thirty-one of the confidential fund. Yeah po, kasi po, nakita po natin, very glaring po, sa letter D, or item number four, purchase of supplies, eksakto, thirty-five million. At dun sa provision of medical and food aid, forty million, eksakto rin. So medyo nakakapagtakal lang po dahil wala pong kabutal-butal, at eksaktong eksakto po 'yung supplies. Okay, so, yun lang po, uh, I will now recognize the-
Mr. Chair, unfortunately, unfortunately, I'm not, uh, done with my questions. If I can just, ano, complete my line of questioning.
Okay, please, uh, with the, with the intelligence of Congresswoman, uh, Luistro, the Deputy Speaker will just, uh, continue with his interpreting.
Gong Jinky, if I may continue, thank you. Um, I just want to, uh, highlight, uh, Kowa. Are you familiar with, um, uh, Kowa rules regarding disbursements of confidential funds and intelligence funds? Uh, Rule four point one five?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, of the joint circular, Mr. Chair.
Yes, yeah. Nakasulat po dun sa four point one five point three, that the details and supporting documents on transactions that are classified are in the custody of the agency and kept in the vault, which may be inspected by the ICF AU if the circumstances so demand. Am I correct?
Four point, uh, four point fifteen, Mr. Chair.
Point three, yeah.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, this pertains to, uh, classified information. Uh, this pertains po to intelligence fund.
Yeah, so maybe, under these circumstances, um, this would fall under those circumstances wherein, uh, we can demand the documents of the transactions?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, when it comes to confidential funds, the documents are submitted or submitted to the ICFAO.
Okay, fantastic, so pakisabit na lang po sa amin at nag, uh, subpoena na naman po kami, no? Uh, ma, mabalikan lang po natin, uh, 'yung line of questioning ko kanina. Um, yeah, can we go back to the slide, please, um, comsec? Oo, thank you. No, 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 uh, dun sa taas, sa taas, yan, okay. Dito po, uh, based sa inyong audit, sampung areas ito, Saluzon, Visayas, at Mindanao? Ma'am, kinunog, 'yung isang slide. 'Yung ginawa po 'yung surveillance activities, would you know, uh, which areas were, uh, under surveillance or conducted surveillance in? Was it in Luzon, Visayas, Mindanao?
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, ang information lang nam, po namin is 'yung nasa utilization report. 'Yung sa documentary evidence of payment po, hindi naman din po identified, yung-
So wala ring klarong supporting documents dun sa surveillance activities na kinundag, am I correct?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, kasi nakakapagtakal lang, no, ma'am, di ba? So, kung titignan din po natin 'yung amount at saka 'yung timing, uh, kailan po ba ito, December twenty to- thirty-one? So, um, didn't you find it quite, uh, out of the ordinary? That people were being placed under surveillance and people were being, uh, under surveillance during Christmas season?
Um, we were just, we just conducted the audit based on the requirements under the joint circular.
Kasi nakakapagtaka, no, ito mga activities na to gagawin sa panahon ng Pasko. They bilang mga auditors, I think that would definitely call your attention, um, on when actually, uh, these activities were conducted. Am I correct?
Uh, yun nga po, uh, based lang po talaga sa joint circular, yung-
Thank you very much, um, Vice Chairman Jay, uh, those are all my questions, so maraming, maraming salamat po, Kowa.
Vice Chairman Jay, can I interject lang po before you recognize the next interpreter?
Thank you, DS JJ Suarez, Honorable Paduan.
Uh, ma'am, you're always telling that it is based on the GMC twenty fifteen, da zero one, di ba? Tama, 'yung sinasabi mo lagi, di ba? Based on the GMC.
Tama po, Mr. Chair.
Oh, now, eto, six point two point three. Etto, kasi, Mr. Chairman, uh, hindi pwede nilang sabihin na based on the requirements, because dito po elaborated lahat, di ba? From six point two point three point one up to six point two point three point six, tama? Elaborated, yeah. But there is still a provision, six point two, uh, six point two point three point seven. Tama?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair.
Ano, please read.
Um, other supporting documents that ICFAO deems necessary for the proper evaluation of liquidation documents admitted.
Ibig sabihin nun, lahat ng mga dokumento which is necessary, so be submitted to you, tama?
Tama po, Mr. Chair.
Oh, depende sa, sa, sa evaluation niyo, kung kailangang dokumento na to.
Tama po, Mr. Chair.
And the question of, of, uh, DS DJ Suarez is all about the surveillance being made by the OBP during Christmas season, di ba?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Oh, di kailangan 'yung dokumento dito ng mga detalye nito, di ba? Sa item na yan. Tama?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Eh, kaya, kaya hindi niyo pwedeng sabihin na based on the GMC? Kasi the GMC, six point two point three point seven provision states that all other documents related to the investigation or to the audit, di ba? Tama?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Oh, kaya 'yung, kaya 'yung lahat na doon, na walang butal, na sinabi kanina ni Chairman, nakapagtataka, di ba? So, dapat, and I know, siguro, pinasammit niyo rin sila 'yung detalye nun.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Oh, yun nga eh, kaya hindi niyo pwedeng sabihin na based on the GMC only? Because the GMC also states, six point two point three point seven, all other related documents.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Oh, di, at least, nagali naman tayo.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, we will now proceed to the next interpreter, the Honorable Jervel Jinky Luistro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good afternoon, everyone. Attorney Camora, the questions are directed to you. Before I proceed to the questions, I just want to have a clarification first about the confidential fund that were given to the OBP. Am I correct? We have one hundred twenty-five million for the last quarter of twenty twenty-two. The same was utilized from December twenty to thirty-one of twenty twenty-two.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair.
And on the succeeding year, that is twenty twenty-three, the OBP was allocated also a total confidential fund equivalent to five hundred million, do you confirm?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair.
And out of the five hundred million, attorney, how much was utilized and how much was unutilized?
Uh, Mr. Chair, for twenty twenty-three, they, they utilized, um, for the first three quarters, which is one twenty-five times three, and, uh, the, for the fourth quarter, they did not, uh, cash advance the amount. So may naiwan pong one hundred twenty-five million.
In other words, for clarification of the committee, I wish to state for the record that when we speak of confidential fund of the Office of the Vice President, we're talking about one hundred twenty-five million spent from December twenty to thirty-one of twenty twenty-two. Another one hundred twenty-five million spent on the first quarter of twenty twenty-three. Another one hundred twenty-five million spent on the second quarter of twenty twenty-three. And another one hundred twenty-five million spent on the third quarter of twenty twenty-three. This is a total, if I'm, I am correct, Attorney Camora, five hundred million, do you confirm?
Um, that is correct, madam, uh, Mr. Chair.
I wish to go back to my question during the last hearing, attorney. I ask you, paano po ba natin idi-distinguish ang confidential fund from regular fund? This time, I want a more comprehensive answer, and please try to laymanize it, because I want this to be understood by the Filipino people. As a matter of fact, I am raising this question so the Filipino people will understand ano po ang pagkakaiba ng confidential fund from regular fund? Let us, uh, discuss first about the purpose.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. Um, ang purpose po ng, um, confidential and intelligence funds are for confidential and/or intelligence activities. Um, while 'yung sa regular funds po, it is for the attainment of programs, activities, and projects other than confidential fund and/or intelligence activities. Ito po 'yung regular na perang ginagamit ng mga government agencies.
And if you will agree with me, attorney, if I would say that-